Hi, everyone. I'm just gonna give, uh, give folks a few minutes to join before we kick the meeting off here.
Hi Stacy.
How's it going?
Hi Stacy. Hi Prince.
Hey Harmony. So I was just, uh, waiting for a few more folks to join us before we officially get started, so we can just hang out for a couple of minutes here.
That's cool.
Thanks. Hey Marcela. Hey. No problem. So while we're waiting for people to join, I'm going to post the, uh, notes into chat in case anybody needs a reference to those. And I'm just starting to mark people as attending. Hopefully we'll get a couple more folks joining us.
Thanks Stacy. Uh, he's having some audio issues.
Yeah, no worries. We can hear you now.
Thanks. Yeah, that's always a little frustrating when the Bluetooth headset doesn't immediately connect.
I feel like this is like just our standard these days. Everyone knows that they, uh, they're always dealing with audio issues as they jump from different platform to different plat- video conferencing platform.
Yep, yep. So, yeah. Twenty twenty-five. So, um, I don't know if we need to sort of give folks a reminder that the meeting is happening, although I'm seeing.
Oh yeah, good call.
I'm the only chair who's joining today. That's fine. Um, we do have an interesting agenda. Okay, so, um. Yeah, okay, several people won't be joining, but we can still, we can still talk about what we have. Um, yeah, so I will start with pulling up the meeting notes, which I thought we already had. Anyway, um. Are there any new members that would like to say hi or start?
I can say hi. Um, hey guys, I'm Caroline. I have contributed to Scorecard in the last few years. Um, but there was a bit of a break and now I'm looking to contribute to something in OpenSSF, so I saw the various working groups and this one caught my eye, so I'm just joined to see what, where the conversation is and to, yeah, introduce myself here. So, thanks.
Hi, welcome. Um, yeah, great to have you. Um. Yeah, so we really just kind of jump straight into, um, our ongoing activities. Um. Is anyone willing to assist with scriving today?
I sure will do my best and then if you have anything to amend to whatever I type in, then feel free.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um. I think we can just jump in. Um. Can, we can add opens, um, in a moment. Um, so Prince, you, you brought up the discussion topic for, for, uh, tip of the month, so do you want to talk a bit more about, um, what you're looking for there and uh, maybe for Caroline, describe what tip of the month is?
Prince, I don't, I don't, I can't hear you very well. I think you're breaking up a little bit.
Yeah, I think your audio is.
Well, shucks. Perhaps we should come back to Princess topic.
Hello.
Sorry Prince. Oh yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Sorry. I think I also have my issues yet. Um, I mentioned that I do not have any topic in mind yet. I was too.
A little bit choppy. On, on my end at least. Okay. Um. I think we had talked about this a little bit, just in DMs with friends as well. Um, so I can try to summarize maybe what you're trying to say. So, um, tip of the month is this kind of short social media post that we had wanted to do. Um. That basically just from any community member in OpenSSF is there's some sort of career tip or open source tip or um, yeah, anything of that sort. Um, that they could offer, we would sort of um, highlight both the community member and sort of write their tip in sort of a short um, memorable form and, and post that um, in, in social media as as like the, the working group's tip of the month. Um, we had said that I think originally when we first thought of this, we said, hey, we can just kind of summarize the community office hours that, um, discussions that we have on a monthly basis, since the speakers there have some very good um, just always some very good insights or um. Kind of lessons for, for people to take away. Um, but we haven't gotten to the point where we are able to actually summarize those sessions. We had started the effort to, to write summaries that we could use both for the YouTube video to sort of post a longer description, but also for, for tip of the month. Um, and then unfortunately, the person who was sort of, who had taken that on, um, left off the working group, so um. I, I think Prince. Um, a- and you can post in the chat if, if you think that your connection is still too unstable. Um, I guess you had said that you wanted to take that on and, and maybe start working on that. Um, on tip of the month.
Yes, and so I was hoping to, um, get some feedback on what should be the tip of the month for this group call. And, and if anyone has this, and it's something that we can discuss after the group calls. If anyone has something else, like something in mind that they would want to on the route to use for the tip of the month.
Yeah. Do folks here have ideas? Um. For, for tip of the month?
Should we start like a doc maybe where we could, uh, asynchronously collab on something like this? I'm happy to do that.
I think so, yeah. We can just list, um, list different topics, right, that we could um, use as, as tip of the month. Thank you Stacy.
Yeah, sounds good.
I have a question about this. So are the tips for, like, related to this working group or is it like for OpenSSF in general tips?
It's supposed to be very general. So, I mean, this working group is basically just driving, putting those out. Um, yeah, but it, yeah, it's supposed to be, and honestly, it doesn't even have to be totally OpenSSF specific, but it can be about career and open source software or cybersecurity or tech. Um.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I see. Okay. Yeah, one of the things I learned, um, from joining, um, the Scorecard community meeting was that there was the security baseline project going on and I didn't, I hadn't known about that, so maybe that tip could be just highlighting a project if that's the area that them, you guys want to go in for those tips.
Yeah. I like that idea too. Um. And maybe you know, like why the project matters or why it can be important.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, one of the things that I think would be really helpful too is because we, we don't necessarily just want to have the tips of the month be sort of project advertising, but maybe talk about um, one of the things that you or anyone who used it, um, sort of learned by using the project. Um, this, that I think can almost resonate more with, with people, because the audience we're trying to reach too is actually, I think, relatively, relatively broad. Um.
I think, I think, um, to the main objective is to solve the personal issue to openness, so, open source in general, so just about anything that has alignment with that or aligns with that. It's fine. So basically getting the solution to open source.
Yeah. Um. Um, okay, that sounds good. Um. So, yeah, yes, we have the action item to start the stock to collaborate on tip of the month. Um, I can sort of pre-populate the doc with, with the topics that we had here and um, the community office hours topics. Go ahead Harmony.
So I, I, I want to go like when you mentioned about the tip of the month, is it basically something that is, first is it strictly around open source projects? And basically saying that something that has, that belongs to a project that basically help, uh, facilitate or make things smoother, that's the audience can actually try out to either make their work easier or make something better for them.
Um, yeah, I I, I know what you're saying. Um, the are you suggesting though that we should add almost a um, like target audience piece to the tip of the month to say like, if this is you? Okay, okay, sorry.
Okay, I'm basically like asking Christian for characters to know here.
Hmm.
If it's just, um, the alone or expanding beyond open source? Or you just have to do it like open source projects or things associated to open source project?
It doesn't have to just be limited to OpenSSF. Um, the idea was that it was, the tips of the month are um, can reach a much broader audience, right, about um, open source contributions in general. Um, joining a career in cybersecurity in general, right? I think a lot of those will be applicable to OpenSSF as well, but, um. Yeah, the goal again is not strictly to just advertise open stuff so much as to say, hey, we are this foundation that focuses on open source software and security. Um, and we're sort of reaching out more broadly. Um. So it's I think it can be both, right? Um, I think we can cover some openness of specific topics like Caroline was saying and also some very gen- general topics like Prince was saying. Does, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, but it, it has to do with security.
Yeah, well. The tip of the month is just something, how do I navigate the, uh, the, the tip isn't going to be a technical tip, right? So it's, it's, it's not supposed to be, um, focused on security specifically either, but it's more about the you know, experience being in that field, right? Um, and so hopefully that doesn't just apply to security practitioners either. Um, and it can apply to other people in tech or software or, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you for
Yeah. Yeah, so we should, we should be very clear about that, that it's really not supposed to be a technical. Uh. Um. It's meant to be technical advice. Yeah, because I will say, I mean, the, the technical advice piece comes a little bit potentially in the different like projects, blog posts, podcasts. Um, right, there's best guy, the best practices documents and all of that, so we want to, I guess, just almost be a compliment to that. Um. Okay, any other comments or questions about tip of the month? Maybe one final thing I'll note is we should try to put these out on a regular cadence, so people can start, I mean, it helps us get organized, but it also helps people, um, kind of uh, look forward to them when they, when they do happen, right? So, um, what is today? The first Tuesday of June. Um. And the office hours are the, well, office hours is the next topic, but, um. We could have the first tip of the month maybe come out. Uh, do you want to say like the Monday of Open Source Summit? Would that work? So that would be um, June twenty-third. Um. Do you want to have that cadence? Um. You can also just decide and see how, how it works.
Um, yeah, I think that, I think that's a good goal to, to start. Yeah, it gives us a couple of weeks to get, get things together. Um, but yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, and so Prince, I guess, uh, Stacy, you and I, and I mean, we can I, I must, but the reason I'm calling this out is so that we have just like um, I want to say like people who own the project so that we can actually just be the ones accountable for, for making this happen.
Sure.
But, um. Yeah. We can can obviously involve the whole community and just, just kind of make sure, but I think we need some people to then just sort of say like, yep, this is the decision we've made. Um. And have that, that, so does, does that work for you Prince? Um, like in three weeks or twenty days? Have something ready?
Sorry, my, I had network issue, but, so I didn't get that. Um, but I'm guessing you're asking like, um, how long should it take for us? Um, please, please help, help me. I didn't get what you said.
No, no, it's fine. Yeah, no, I was just saying, um, right now for the first tip of the month, we are targeting June twenty-third. That's a Monday.
Okay.
Um, and so I was just asking if that time also works for you. Um.
Sure, that, that's funny.
Okay, yeah.
Two hundred twenty-seven every month, is that what we are suggesting?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's the day that we would release the first tip of the month.
That's cool.
Okay. Sounds good. So, and then we can decide from there if we do it every four weeks or however, um. Okay. Um, let's move on to the, um, let's move on to the, um, next agenda topic, which is searching for speakers for our next office hours. Um. So the June office hours, we had said it was going to be, we, we wanted it to be a pride month discussion. Um. It's essentially how we've been doing the office hours, uh, so far uh, this year, where we just invite a couple of speakers who, um, identify with, represent a particular uh, community, um. Because we sort of, we're essentially trying to highlight the more personal aspect of being an open source. Um, and being an OpenSSF and being in, in tech in general. Um, and so, uh, we I guess at this point, we're, we're looking for, for a couple of speakers. I don't think we need too many. I think even just two people who can were, um, sort of comfortable having this conversation. Um, and then we also should find a date for it. Um, June, sort of the second half of June is a bit tricky because of um, a US national holiday on Juneteenth and then, uh, Open Source Summit happening in person week that we normally would have held our office hours. So, um, this doesn't leave a ton of time. Rest of the plan, um, but I was wondering if people here have ideas for who to invite. Um, how to, how to do this outreach. Um. And, yeah, when to schedule.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at the calendar and really the, the only available date would be like next Thursday. Um.
Yeah.
June twelfth, so, uh, that feels, or is that next Thursday or Thursday after? Oh my gosh.
Uh, no, that's next Thursday already.
It's next Thursday already. Wow. Okay. Um, time flies when you're having fun, right? Uh. Yeah, so, I mean, can we, can we put a general call out to, um, like on, on our general Slack channel? And maybe I don't know, see if marketing can help us somehow.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be good. We, um. I think I did that for last month's, um. We do have a form, like a speaker stand-up form.
Oh, great. Oh. How could I have said that yet?
Um, you know, I created this like a while ago and we have one response who already spoke.
Yeah, well, maybe we can start promoting, yeah, promoting that just in general with, uh, with help from marketing.
Yeah, so here's a, um. Here's a link to the, I guess, the editing of the, um, speaker form. Um. We can change the twenty twenty-five planned topics. Um, we have a bunch of TBD dates on there, but that's, that's fine. Um, yeah. So um, that would be great if, if the marketing group can help us with this, because we have honestly been having Honestly, been having a very hard time getting people to, I don't know, sign up. Um, I don't know if it's because our form is uh. Easy to use or or exactly what, but um, we can move this down. Um. But yeah, it. Eventually, we would also very much like to have sort of mentorship focused, a couple of mentorship focused office hours. Um. But yeah, so. Uh, I I'm not exactly sure what else to to do besides try to send these out. Um, I do know at least one person that I could um potentially reach out to as a speaker. I'll have to see if she's available. Um. And and yeah, other than that, we can see, see what we get. Um, do you think the timeline of June twelve is achievable though, Stacy?
Oh, it feels tight. Um, yeah. But, I mean, we can, we can try and make it happen, and if it doesn't, so be it, right? Uh, is there any way to do it on, I guess, another day, right? I think that that would be the only. I know we like to have our our office hours on Thursdays, um. But with Open Source Summit and Juneteenth both falling falling on those on two weeks out of the month, that's that. Makes it almost impossible. Uh Harmony, did you have something?
Yes, I wanted to say that I noticed the last month, we canceled the office hours last month and it was like an AM session with project maintainers, right? We could literally make it like a different section, but this summer, make it broader, right? Might not be an AM session, but maybe it's something where people get to know how to manage. Project that are at either dimension or a contributor by learning about some project management skills. And a couple of other things that they can use for like best practices in working with uh open source environments, right?
Yeah, um, we can, so I guess I'll say two things. I think that's a very good suggestion. Harmony, that we should have um a. Future. Topic on project management. Um, that's something that I think a lot of people. Um. Uh, i- it's not an easy skill to pick up just on it on its own, right? Um. And we can say project management of source even. Um. The issue is still the short timeline, getting something scheduled, I think regardless of the topic. Um, this time is just a very busy time for a lot of people. Um, and so I don't personally feel like I'm um. Someone who should speak to this topic, it should be people who actually do program management or project management more professionally. Um, and again, it just takes time to find some of these speakers. Um. That also being said, we do already have the topic for June, so we could have. Um, be because we're starting the mentorship this week. Um, I think it makes sense to have the July and August ones be be those topic, be these topics. Um. I don't know if you want to do like a one off. Um, I also still do think that an AMA with project maintainers.
Yeah.
Honestly, it could be that. I guess what you're, I I I see what you're saying, Harmony, that. Yeah, maybe the the slightly broader topic is actually more helpful for, like more broadly helpful.
Yeah, and I think I think enough of this one, but we could look like in future instances. I think it's a good topic, especially because it's it's the field I operate in, project and products. And I know how difficulties in community based product or project managing people.
Yeah.
At how how technically could look right, so I think it's a good thing to talk about, especially. But maybe not for June, maybe in future instances.
No, I I really like that suggestion. Um, so maybe we can update the. Uh, form to ask for, to just change the. The topic from the project maintainers to um the program management or project management one. Um, I, yeah, thank you for that. Prince, go ahead.
Yeah, so I was thinking, uh, is it possible we could find speakers same month in advance?
Um, we've tried that. Uh. Uh, that's kind of what the form was supposed to be. Um, was to just tell people here the upcoming topics and please. If if you're interested, join, sign up, and. We get no responses, um. Uh, we can try to do that. The other thing too is it's.
Other.
Yeah. So i- i- I think it's possible. We just need to be a bit more diligent about it too. Um, and like I said to you, just in in DMs, like I don't have the bandwidth to constantly be reaching out to people, unfortunately. Um. And so this is why we we try to do it this way, um.
Maybe we could reach out to marketing or something.
Um, yeah.
Uh, or perhaps schedule uh topics for discussion. See, a year in advance or since month in advance, something. That would help us, so we have, we have uh topics scheduled. Months in advance.
Yeah.
Because, because you know what, this is us in months.
Yeah, no, we actually do have several topics scheduled months in advance and. Uh, sometimes things have to move around, but yeah, in general, like we are already doing a lot of these things and. Um. I I wonder too if we're not communicating the expectations um. Correctly, right? Maybe people think it's too much work. Um, to. Um. I I don't know. Um. Yeah. So there's, I think there's better outreach that we could be doing. We could be doing outreach sooner. Um, we do know that these office hours are coming, so um. Yeah. Um. You should definitely. I mean, this is again why we're trying to to do the form, um, right now. For for the June one, um. Maybe June twelve is not, I mean, we can try to aim for June twelve and if it doesn't, if you don't have. All of our speakers lined up by next, whatever, Monday in a week, we just say it happens on a different, on a different day. Um. I would be, I would be comfortable with scheduling this not on a, not on a Thursday. Um. Yeah. So.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah. We can even use this time slot in two weeks on the seventeenth to do that. And that gives us some more time.
Yeah.
And then we don't need to put more events on people's calendars either. People already just know that this event happens. And we just say that we're hosting the office hours then.
Oh, yeah, that's a really good alternative.
Yeah, June seventeen feels a bit more feasible.
Doable. Yeah.
So we can do that, um. Okay. Let's. Okay, anything else on the? Office hours for June and coming up?
I think we have the mentorship updates. What is a part of this meeting?
Yeah. Okay, so um, I see it's a nail dropped. Um. Anyway, so uh mentorship updates are going to be very fast, um. This is essentially, we we finalized our selection of um. Or a selection of mentees for both projects. Um, in the end, we accepted four. It just has to do with how much bandwidth the mentees have or the mentors have, um. So, uh, I think they'll be starting this week. Uh, the selection for for artists have took a little bit longer just because um Cairo was looking to select more. Uh, more mentees and, excuse me. Second. Um, yeah, so Cairo is looking to select three mentees to work with, um. And he was sort of doing the selection by himself, so. Um, he finalized the selection on Monday, those decisions went out and. Um. Should be doing some onboarding and beginning the projects this week. Um, so I still need to check in with mentors, but yeah, I think we're just going now. Um, yeah, and so for July, I think it'd be really good to do the project management. Uh, topic and. Then in August, what I would like to do is use the office hours. Um, I don't know if this is going to be possible. Um. But I would like each of the mentees to essentially uh. Give sort of a five or ten minute presentation on the work that they've been doing all summer. Um, this helps with sort of public speaking skills and presentation. Um, we can learn about what it is that they have done and what they've learned. Um, and just sort of try to provide a supportive environment for them, for for them, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Are you, uh, what date are were you thinking of for for that presentation by the the mentees?
Um, we can use the August office hours for that, I think.
Cool.
Um, yeah, so. I think, yeah, that would be good. To to do that. Um, and yeah, that's again so that we. I mean, at that point, we already have the speakers finalized on the one hand, so we don't have to, we we can focus on the future ones. Um, but also, um, yeah, we don't need to add more meetings to these calendars again. Um. And I already spoke with the mentors, they really like this idea, so.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. That's, I think, pretty close. Yeah. Yeah, I think it'll be pretty close to the end of their mentorship anyway, so then. Um, and they should be wrapping up and have something to talk about and. Um, yeah, so that's all I had on mentorship updates. Any questions or comments about that? Until they're giving lightning talks, um. Okay, so, uh, I think that's all I had to. Um, I think at some point, maybe. Um, in. Well, a couple of things for us to decide is, do we want to see if we can? Um, get funding for a all cycle of mentorship? Um. See if there are a couple more projects that are willing to host mentees. Um, maybe it's a smaller cohort than the summer one, but that's a decision that we should make soon. So we can start doing the funding requests. Um. And I guess the second thing that I would like to do as well is. Having reviewed some of the mentee applications, um to just sort of have an office hour eventually about. Um, what? Kind of how to write a successful mentee application or like a sort of, what are ways that you can sort of? Um. Yeah. Does and don'ts and those kinds of things of of mentee applications. I think that'd be helpful for people as well. Um.
Yeah, that would be, I learned about you. I should have given that I, right? It would help.
Yeah, there were a lot of people that applied, um, and uh, it's. I mean, I I wish we could have accepted more, right? So it's, um. Just hopefully next year we can have more projects that can support more. Uh, more mentees, um hopefully in the fall, we can have projects. Um. And that that post, so. Um. Something that I think um we can discuss, maybe also in the tag, to just see who. Uh, which projects may potentially. Um. Yeah, have the ability to to host mentees uh in the fall cycle. Especially now that we have a process. And, okay. Any, okay, any final questions on this? All right, um, otherwise, the final agenda item is this Open Source Summit and a in-person meetup. Um, I think we had talked about this the last meeting. Um, I forget, Stacy, were you going to see if there's some sort of lunch or breakout session that we could have?
Yeah, I'm still working with the events team to see what might be possible for this. Um, I know that there was also. A um, a room request that we were trying to get too, so that could possibly be something that we use. Um, but nothing, nothing is solidified yet, so I need to uh, I need to check back in with it with our events team to see. Um, what's po- what's possible there.
Okay, um. Okay, and I think the bear working group is going to be at the Open S S F booth two days. Um, so I think Tuesday and. Uh, Tuesday and Wednesday, if there's still a Monday slot, I may take that one. Um.
Yeah.
I I just didn't want to take too many slots either.
Oh, gosh, no, it's fine. And you know, I imagine people will be coming and going too, so. Um, it's totally okay. We can have more than three people there at the booth at the same time, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's still some open slots.
Yeah, so it can, yeah, I I don't mind doing that, and then, oh. Thanks. If, yeah, if we get the room, I think that'd be really, really good, otherwise. Um. Yeah, we can maybe just plan some sort of coffee. Coffee break. I need to run myself with the schedule, because I think the idea would be to actually. Post it during Open S S F day, is that true? I guess we haven't decided on the day.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think. I think that's what we're we're trying to figure out is like when we can get a room or if we can just sort of have like a. Um. Like a section or a, you know, a seating section for like the bear working group at like lunch or something like that, so.
Yeah.
Uh, on the day of Community Day, right? Uh, but I think if we're getting a room, it might be during Open Source Summit. Right? Not on the day of our event, of course. Um, so yeah, we just have to kind of decide, which makes sense if we can do it that Tuesday, um.
Yeah. So, I guess there are two breaks that are kind of. Scheduled plus the lunch break. Scheduled plus the lunch break. Yeah, so I guess we'll, maybe we'll wait to hear back from the. Uh, events people. Um, the events team, um, to see.
Yeah, and I'll I'll sync up with them today, um, to see what we can make work. Would you, would you have a preference on doing it like during Community Day versus during Open Source Summit?
I don't.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I I don't, I think it's just, we're mostly trying to just, yeah, have a have a space for people to meet in person and chat.
Yeah. Cool.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, I'll I'll check on that today and then I'll post in our in our Slack channel. And we can take it from there.
Okay. Oh, um, do we have, oh, do we have? Distracted. I was looking at the action items and saw that there's an LGBTQ plus channel, but that's in CNCF, I guess.
It's in CNCF, yeah. I was also gonna look in maybe Kubernetes, um, channels to see, you know. What's there? I haven't actually joined a a lot of these groups yet, but I should.
Yeah, same. Yeah, I think we had talked about maybe even creating some of these social channels in the openness of Slack.
Right.
Is that something that, I mean. That can happen relatively quickly, right? Or is there some sort of? I don't know.
Process protocol.
Maybe, yeah.
Um, no, I think I think um, I can probably create that. Uh, like, it just depends on what we want to call it and how we want to, you know, uh, identify it and label it. Especially since, you know, we don't tend to generally like labels. Um, but you know, I think having like a LGBTQ plus channel is probably fine.
Yeah, I think that's fine, maybe like, uh, women and non-binary ones as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Just maybe just starting with those two would be good.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, so sorry for the distraction, um. Yeah. Uh, so is there anything else for the in-person meetup in, I guess, later this month? Another thing that just came to mind. Is scheduling some kind of walk around Denver or in a park or something. The weather is nice, it could be sort of all of us like trekking from the convention center.
Yeah, that would be really fun.
Cafe or something, I don't know.
I know that, I know that uh, OpenSSF staff is trying to plan something for ourselves, so we might want to consider. Uh, doing something for the community as well, um, so that might be fun.
Yeah. Oh, Prince, I know, um, hopefully for for open source, uh, community or open source summit EU. Can plan something. Um, something similar, so. I think we just kind of need to see what works for for people. Amsterdam is probably also much more walkable than Denver, but I don't know.
Walkable and bikeable, so I think that bu- a biking, a biking uh, activity might be in order for Amsterdam.
Gosh. Yeah.
I don't know what the liability is with that, but.
Here's the waiver. Sign the waiver, um, yeah, no, that's a good. Yeah.
Um, the only other thing that I would like to mention is. Uh, Open Source Security Con is happening as a colo event. Uh, with CubeCon this year, and we're we're actually, OpenSSF is partnering with um, CNCF. To put this on, right? Um, so if anyone is interested, the the interest form to be on like the program committee. Is actually June fifth is is the deadline to submit if you wanted to participate in the program committee. Um, not necessarily if anyone, you know, not, no pressure for this group, but just throwing it out there. Uh, that, and if you've never participated on a program committee. Uh, I know, Marcella, you've done a ton, I've done a ton, so I'm happy to share kind of what it's like, what the experience is and kind of how things are 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 done there. But this one is a, you have to submit the form if you want to be uh, on the committee at all, or be a a chair or a co-chair. Um, so I will just, uh, drop the link in here on what that is, and you can take a look. Yeah.
I think Harmony, you had a question.
Yeah, I I wanted to ask for the link, so I'm excited and something I can do.
I'm sorry, I'm I missed that, my um, my audio was not so great.
Yeah, I think he was saying that, um, he was just excited for the link and. Sounds interesting, I think.
Yeah.
Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, absolutely, alright.
Yeah, you can read uh, all about it, Prince, on the uh, interest form link. And they'll they'll kind of dive into what they what they have for requirements and things like that, so. Um, I'll post it in here right now. Okay, there it is.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that, um, I'm certainly interested. Um, I I like being on program committees because I feel like I've learned so much about. What makes a good talk. And just different topics that people are thinking about and. Um, wanting to present, um, did you post it in the chat?
Oh, I posted it in the doc, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's right.
I think it's it's not on the chat, sorry, my internet went.
Oh, yeah, I didn't put it in the chat, I can put it in the chat for you, though. There you go.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've seen it in the in the.
Is that the right link, y'all? When I um, when I click on it, it tells me I've already submitted, so. Okay, cool.
CNCF hosted co-located events program committee.
Right.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes, I think you can, you can submit to be on more than one, so. You you do like your primary one that you want to be on, and then like maybe a secondary one that you're interested in.
Yeah. Thank you for letting us know, and I think the CFP is also still open.
Yeah, for Open Source Security Con, the CFP is open, I think through the end of June, uh, and I'll paste that link in the doc as well. Case anyone wants to submit.
Yeah, thank you. Great, any final thoughts or ideas, questions? Working group. Okay, so I'll just go through the action items. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and there's no time to get answered, I mean. Um, I just wondered if I sent you ideas, Stacy, um, do you need to be a speaker to, um? Uh, how would I phrase this? I need to be a speaker to attend the Linux Security Summit and then process. I I don't have tickets for the. Process.
Oh, are you, are you talking about for the uh, the travel funding? Can you hear me, Prince?
Yes, and I think you did confirm that, but. Tickets, but is it a free event? I don't think so, but versus you.
Oh, um, I think if it is not, I'm gonna, I have to go back and check, so. Let me look into it, and I will follow up with you, I have a, I have a pending message that I need to send you. Uh, on our Slack channel DM, um. Uh, right now, so why don't I follow up with you after this call, um, and we can sync up on on this.
Sounds good.
Okay. Yep, no problem.
Okay, cool, I'm glad you asked that, um. Okay, so in the last few minutes, um, it looks like outstanding action items. Um, thank you, Stacy, for starting that doc. Um, does everyone here have access? I guess.
Oh, yeah, I guess I should. It's in the working group, like Bear Working Group folder. So, hmm, if you do need access, just let me know and, uh, we can, yeah. Can add you.
Okay. Um, and then. I guess me and Prince can handle the first six of the month. Uh, we just need to decide on a topic, Prince, so once we have those listed in the doc. That Stacy created, we can, I think, um, you can choose the one that you think would be most interesting for the first one. And reach out to the. To the community member. Uh, who who said that. And then, yeah, this looks, I'll I'll take an action item actually to start. Start, um, our slide deck.
FYI, Prince, I added you as an editor to this doc, so. Should be able to.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Okay. So, um, yeah. All, we're at the top of the hour. Thank you everyone so much for joining and participating, and I'm giving your suggestions. We will reconvene in in two weeks, either as an office hour or just another working group meeting. But, yeah. Thank you.
See you then.